And we'll have a roll call, please.
Miller.
Here.
I'm sorry.
Here.
Benson.
Here.
Milton.
Here.
Valencia.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Haniford.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Item number four is Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items: approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 17, 2015, and approval of claims in the amount of $244,823.71 and payroll expenses of $156,023.71. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Benson, second by Dr. Haniford, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson.
Yes.
Haniford.
Yes.
Valencia.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Item number six is Reports from Boards and Officers. There are reports from the tourism tax meeting.
Yes, their meeting was rather short. It consisted of minutes and claims. Then they also, but they also did approve up to $5,000 for the fire department mud slinger shootout, which is that 11th annual event. And that was approved, and that was all, that was the bulk of their meeting.
Is there any idea on the audit for the...
I'll make that presentation at their next meeting. They did not get any bids in on their audit. So at this point, we'll be able to maybe go out and negotiate. Did receive a couple of inquiries from people that we'd sent requests to that just didn't have the time to do it currently, but would be willing to discuss and maybe negotiating rates at some point in time in the future when their municipal business is a little slower. So the December, January, February timeframe. But I'll make that presentation at their next meeting.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Dunham? Mr. Fisher, do you have a report from the Rec Park Board meeting? I do know that in my list of appointees, there are three terms that expire next month for the Rec Park Board, so we'll have something on a upcoming agenda for Rec Park Board members. Any questions for Mr. Fisher? Anything to add, Joe Don?
No, nothing at this time. We did talk about some things, but I'd like to discuss it with the planning, with the ARC committee before we discuss it here.
Item number, or item C is Planning Commission Meeting from 8:24.
If you look under item number six, the minutes from that meeting are present. The Planning Commission voted to rezone that property from agricultural to commercial for the future development that has been brought before Finance Committee over the last year. This is just the first step in getting that process moving.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Miller? All right. Special Planning Commission Meeting from 8:27.
That agenda is posted in here. It does not have the minutes. I had not seen the minutes from that meeting, however, that the recommendation was to disapprove that permit from that meeting.
I will add that since that meeting, Council President Valencia has requested some time before it comes before the council to allow, I guess, negotiations between Chair Medical Center and Integris to see if there were opportunities that might impact the decision of this body. Anything to...
No, I think from the Planning Commission meeting, there were several comments of those members that were hoping that there could be some way to look into the possibility of seeing if there were any opportunities for partnership between the two groups or collaboration between the two groups. I think that that process is going to be...
Any questions for Mr. Miller or anything regarding that special planning commission Item E is a Special Airport Board Meeting from 8:28. Mr. Miller.
Further on in our agenda, we will discuss this further, but that meeting was to make a recommendation to the city council on the taxiway extension.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? All right, Mr. Miller, would you give us Finance Committee report?
Fairly routine. We did have, we had four weeks of payroll that fell into this because of the three-week period between council meetings. We had long discussion over the water meter and our, how the new water meters read gallons versus cubic feet and the rate structure for that. Still waiting on some, we're going to do some more analysis to see how to adjust that rate structure. Had a little bit more discussion on the development behind Walmart that has been surveyed, and we came back from the developers for their, from their next item of what they were going to request. We did have some large claims besides payroll. General Fund had some, had a mower and a pool pump, bulk fuel. It totaled almost about $26,000. We had, Street and Alley Fund had about $34,000 of asphalt and oil purchases that was also in there. And then we had our debt service payments, which altogether total about $60,000. Other than that, it was fairly routine. Joe Don did discuss with us about the OGME utility bill, about some ways that we could possibly save there, which is about $15,000 a month. Do you hear?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you. Mayor's report, it was a pretty busy timeframe between the last meeting and this meeting as far as events in the community. We had Frank Lucas in town. Of course, we had also with Senator Langford's office, we had his field representative, Burks Wright, and himself, been here on two separate occasions between the two of them. And I think those are pretty well attended by community members. We don't know what to expect sometimes for, you know, a 7:00 AM or a 4:00 PM kind of meeting, but there was community participation in each. Couple of big events last week. Bill Johnson's had their 20th anniversary, and I was honored to accept on the city's behalf citations from both the lieutenant governor and the governor commending the city for its participation in the success of Bill Johnson's. And I know that, you know, that's been something that initially the land was needed by the city, and the city has really tried to support the programs that they've been trying to implement out there with is really a best practices type institution for much of Corrections Field. So that was an honor. Also had the honor of being present with the Shear Convalescent Home for their 50th anniversary. It was not quite as lengthy a proceeding, but still, they were able to demonstrate some of the impact on the community. It was a good thing. Couple of meetings coming up. Had a, as far as remarks from citizens and whatnot, have had a few calls from people that are happy that their streets have been done, but maybe disappointed that there's gravel on their yards now. And I've discussed that with Mr. Dunham and what we have in the street committee meeting after this meeting to maybe go over some of that as well. But it's good to see progress on the streets. Continued calls on the application for health care facilities. And really, we're, that would conclude my report unless anybody has any questions. All right, next item is City Business Manager's Report. Mr. Dunham.
Well, I have several items I'd really like to report on. And the full council may or may not know a lot about all of, each and every one of these, but the library has had roofing issues and a leakage up there for quite some time. We've been trying to get it patched in several different manners. Hasn't worked out to the city's interest at this time. So I met with engineers and architects last Wednesday to discuss what could be done about the, about the roof. We discussed several different options to include putting the pitched roof on it, trying to investigate the current drainage system on the flat roof, or maybe even trying to install a plastic liner, a product that's currently being used with some success over the current roof. I think before we proceed much further, we've got to decide whether or not that drainage system is defective and leaking, and that's where we're seeing our leaks, because our leaks are coming in some pretty obscure, strange places. But that old, that old drainage system was a metal pipe that very well could be compromised at this time. And if that, if that is an issue, we've got to factor that into our decision on what to do about the roof. We did talk in length about how we were going to be doing, able to do that. We can get a cam, we can hire somebody with a camera system to go down there and check, go through that drain, those drainage pipes and check for leaks or any breakages or anything like that. One of the other things we did talk about was putting a pitched roof on that building. Not real sure how the council or the library board would feel about that at this time, because that would pretty drastically change the aesthetics of the roof in the building. Didn't fit, the architect didn't feel like, we needed about a 30-inch drop from the front of the building to the back to get it to drain if we put a low-profile roof on there. And we're not, we're not sure we've got that. That 30 inches, just don't think we've got it there to make that drain off to the back. So we're going to, you know, and to put a conventional roof is drastically going to change the aesthetics of that building. So we're looking at that. Architect's going to do a little bit more research on this plastic product that he was talking about to maybe make some recommendation on how we can fix that in the near future and kind of what that's going to cost us. Talked about the Young Street Waterline Replacement Project. We're probably about 30 days out from bidding on this project. I have met with NWSU officials and briefed them on the possibility, the very real possibility of some inconveniences they're going to experience up there by doing this replacement project. We're going to look about running that, you know, it'll certainly affect the cafeteria. It'll affect the dormitories to a lesser extent, but probably even as dramatically, it'll affect the parking along, along, right there in front of the, that goes along right there, and I can't think of the road, the street name.
Eighth Street.
Huh?
Eighth.
Well, Eighth, it'll be, the parking lot's along Eighth Street, but right there where the students park in front of the cafeteria along that east-west street.
Brouwer.
Huh?
Brouwer.
Brouwer, okay. I couldn't think of the name of it. It'll affect them, and there'll certainly be a lot of construction that goes along through there. We would anticipate this, you know, we're going to try to work to keep this inconvenience to a minimum for everybody that lives in the area, because we'll be going along, you know, it'll affect driveways, it'll affect parking lots. It's a major, it's a major water line replacement. But it will dra, it'll dramatically improve the water, the water systems deliverability for Alva, because that's one of the main feeder lines that feeds the rest of the town. Our Ceiling Street Project, we received the material list for this last week. Once we have that material on hand, we're going to start work on that. Do anticipate completion by February of 2016 on this, on that project. We're working with electricians at the transfer station to finish up installing the electrical. We still have to put together the heating and the exhaust fans. We're searching for contractors to do that at this time. Expect to have the project under final review for ODEQ by the 30th of October. Talked with engineers and applicant, and architects about the Public Works Building Rehabilitation Project that we've got going on. The first phase of this project would be the addition of an office area and restroom right up there at the front of the building. The bidding document, the plans are, with bidding documents should be complete and ready for council approval next month. This, this will add about 900 square feet of office space to that building. The ARC Strategic Planning Project, we're going to have some conceptual drawings for the ARC Board of the strategic plan by their September 16 meeting. And if the board is interested in those plans, likes the way they look, we'll meet with the architect to schedule, be at the scheduled board meeting in October to discuss that project in more detail. It's expected right now with the planning documents, it costs somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000 to complete the strategic plan with planning documents. And right now, the ARC, the ARC has about $40,000 budgeted for this position, for this project. Current positions we're advertising for would be police officer. We've got two street worker positions that we'll be interviewing for this week. The airport manager should be interviewing part-time airport attendants right now, and we're searching for a part-time admin assistant and a part-time recreation, recreation employees. And mayor and council, well, a few other things before I close that. The city did submit a application to the Wisdom Family Foundation for the upgrading of the city's comprehensive plan. We have not heard anything back on that, and we've got one other application that we had submitted for grant funding for some playground equipment, and we haven't heard back on that application yet either. And with that, mayor and council, that would be my report. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Dunham? Thank you, Joe Don. Item number seven, Discussion and Action to Award the Bid on City Municipal Liability Vehicle Equipment and Property Insurance to the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group.
Well, this is a project we've been working on for quite some time, talking about it at the Finance Committee and other places, and in the council room. I've asked Doye Spitler with OMEG to try to answer any questions that you may have on this. Right now, when we, after we reviewed the project today and the coverages, it is, based on what we spent last year, which was $140,000, we're going to save about $17,000 over a year's time going with one carrier. And actually add coverage on some of our, some of our equipment that we haven't had coverage on up until now. But it's, it's anticipated that over a year's time, the OMEG bid would cost us about $123,000.
Are there any questions?
Coverage is still at the same level?
Coverage is still at the same level. We won't be, and we won't be canceling policies. So everybody that has a policy now because they are paid in full up until now, they will be allowed to lapse. Once they lapse, we will move them over into the new, into the OMEG insurance coverage and have a short plan year to get everybody to a nine, to get all of our insurance to a nine-one expiration date instead of having eight or 10 expiration dates like we have now.
I think it's important to point out there's also more equipment insured through the proposal than previous.
Yes.
Would there be a motion to award the bid?
I would make a motion to award the bid to Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group for the city's municipal liability vehicle and property insurance. I'll say.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Valencia, to award the bid on city municipal liability vehicle, equipment, and property insurance to the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller.
Yes.
Valencia.
Yes.
Haniford.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Item number eight, Discussion and Action to Approve/Disapprove Planning Commission's Recommendation to Rezone a Tract of Land Located in the Southwest Quarter of Section 19 Township 27 North Range 13 West of the Indian Meridian Woods County, Oklahoma, described as follows: Commencing at the southwest corner of the southwest quarter thence north, zero degrees, 25 minutes, 17 seconds.
Okay.
I don't know.
I think you can just say it's listed in item number eight.
All right. Let's do that.
So where is this at? Is this where Alva Concrete's going?
No, this is behind Walmart.
Well, that's true.
Yes. It's under development right now. They are talking about hotel, restaurant, strip mall, and some housing is what they've been talking to us about.
This was recommended by the Planning Commission at their last regular meeting. Is there any questions? Or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission to rezone this property as listed in the agenda.
I'll say. I have a...
He begin.
He begin?
Begin.
I'll give it to him. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Benson, a second by Councilman Eckhart, to approve the Planning Commission's Recommendation to Rezone a Tract of Land Located in the Southwest Quarter of Section 19 Township 27 North Range 13 West of the Indian Meridian Woods County, Oklahoma, described as is in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Valencia.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Item nine is Discussion and Vote to Approve the Recommendation from the Airport Board to Award the Bid for Alva Airport Taxiway Extension Project to Nash Construction in an Amount Not to Exceed $705,852,000.
With this project, there are several factors that are going into it. We are asking to approve the, it has been recommended to approve the bid in the full amount. If you'll recall, at the last council, or one of the last council meetings, we approved, you approved a grant application for $661,000 for this project. There is some work that we're going to be doing with a third party with, right now looking like the county, if we can come to agreements on what's going to be, what's going, what kind of work needs to be done, some rough dirt work to help reduce this cost and bring it back down into the grant awardable phase. The, the project will also take up approximately $57,000 of our 2016 grant money. Right now, we receive about $150,000 a year from FAA on grants, so we've banked up to the 661 that we've got now. We will, are anticipating to get another 150, next year, we will have to use $57,000 of that money to complete the project. What that means is that we're basically going to be acting as a banker for ourselves. We expend the money now to collect it on a reimbursement in 2016 after the federal FAA budget is approved. That's the recommendation that we have now. Would expect to see some change orders come up before council in the future on this, on this project. Did I hit that right, Mr. Miller?
I think so. I think the other thing is, we looked at rebidding again. The problem is that 150,000 that we get every year, you can only bank so many years, and then it starts dropping off. So if we rebid, if we actually, while it's going to cost us 57,000 next year, if we wait, we lose 150,000 from six years ago, and that, that would drop off. And so we'd still have to come up with that money in the future, I mean, if it were rebid. There was only one bidder, and Joe Don spoke about meeting with the county to alleviate some of that cost. I'd make a motion to approve Taxiway Extension Project and the bid from Nash Construction in an amount not to exceed $705,852,000.
Second. I have a motion from Councilman Miller, second from Dr. Haniford, to approve the recommendation from the Airport Board to award the bid for Alva Airport Taxiway Extension Project to Nash Construction in an amount not to exceed $705,852,000. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller.
Yes.
Haniford.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Valencia.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Item number 10 is Discussion and Action to Approve the City of Alva Police Department Kids and Cops Program. We have Assistant Chief Orkut here. If anybody has any questions, I assume.
And I'll start off, and he can fill in the gaps. What this is, the police department came to me a couple of weeks ago wanting to pursue a... to pursue a program where they could basically kind of give back to the community, but along with that, they were gonna be asking for maybe some donations from groups or individuals in the community. And we, that's one of the reasons it's here before council tonight, is that I felt like we needed to, the council needed to approve that program before we started trying to solicit, solicit any donations from anybody, so the council was aware of it. Ben, would you like to explain the program to the council?
Most everybody's heard of the program Shop with the Cop. That's kind of what this would be based on. You can't use the slogan Shop with the Cop, it's trademarked by the F O P Target Stores. But I've talked to several other departments, and they've gotten away from the actual shopping cop mom to do their own programs, because there's some limitations. But what we would like to do is try to get enough money donated, and we would like to see 10 kids this year, just to spend 150 dollars each. If we had more than that, we talked about possibly taking them and letting them buy a coat, a pair of shoes before they spend 150 dollars. That way we knew they, you know, if they needed a coat or shoes or something like that. But the benefit of it is, is it's not only is it good for the kids to have a positive influence by law enforcement, especially when you're seeing negative all the time, and everything, turning TV on is something negative about law enforcement. But it's also good for my police officers, because sometimes you get the feeling that when people see you, it's always because something bad just happened. You know, we kind of, I kind of had this experience with Dr. Hannifer on campus the other day. I was there for a meeting, and I could tell he was worried something bad had happened when he came to talk to me. And, you know, we want people to know that we're not always around just because something bad fixing to happen, or because we're taking them on and out of jail. You know, we want to give back to our community, too, and this is a good way to do it, especially if we can put a positive influence in a young child's life. So, basically, the program would be, if we could earn enough, enough money to take 10 kids, that's what that would be our goal. And then the officers would meet with those kids in the morning, they would get to take a ride in a fancy police car to Walmart, and then the cops would just get to spend the day with the kids. Let them shop, let them, let them buy things that they typically wouldn't get. We'd like to do it around Christmas time, but it wouldn't solely have to be a Christmas experience. We talked about if we've earned enough money and this continued on in the future, having a kids and cop program right before school, so they can do school supplies, or something like that. So, you know, I don't know, if you guys get a copy of this, and you, if anybody has
Do you have any kind of estimate on best-case scenario, like how many kids need to be affected by this program?
I, I started with 10, and that was before I started talking to anybody. The food program that went on this summer for kids, they told me there were fewer from 50 to 60 kids every day, their, or families, I'm not sure. But, you know, 50 or 60, that's a lot. That's why we talked about maybe doing it once at Christmas and once at the beginning of school, so that we could help out more kids. We went with 10, because I have 10 officers. I think you put more than one kid per officer, the officer's gonna have a handful, especially, you know, a lot of my officers don't have kids, so. Monetarily, we'd like to see, obviously, the 1500 raised just for the kids. I would like to see more than that, because I would like to be able to advertise this. I'd like to make it a media event, because then it doesn't, it's not just good for the kids, it's also good for the community to see that, you know, you welcome law enforcement is going out, you know, we're trying to help. You know, it's good for us, because like I said, every time you turn the TV on, a cop has shot somebody, or beat somebody up, and it seems like that's all that you hear about in law enforcement these days, so.
I commend you. I think it's an awesome endeavor.
Yeah, I think it's a real good program. There are, the, you just do a simple search on the internet, and you're gonna find a lot of communities from small towns to big cities that have some variation of this, of this program out there.
And I really don't think the funding's gonna be an issue, because once I started talking to people about it, I mean, George is probably, so.
You carry a gun.
I'll make a motion to approve the Alva Police Department Kids and Cops Program.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Vincent, a second by Councilman Milton, to approve the City of Alva Police Department Kids and Cop Program. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Vincent?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannifer?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, Ben. Item number 11, Discussion and Action to Enter Into Executive Session pursuant to 25 Oklahoma Stat 307 B2 to Discuss Negotiations with I A F F Local 3782 Alva, Oklahoma. May I have the council, or a motion?
Motion to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 Oklahoma Stat 307 B2 to Discuss Negotiations with I A F F Local 3782 Alva, Oklahoma.
I have a motion by Dr. Hannifer, a second by Councilman Fisher, to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 O S 307 B2 to discuss negotiations with I A F F Local 3782 Alva, Oklahoma. May I have the clerk, the council, business manager? Ah! All right. Please call the vote.
Valencia? Milton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.